Welcome to the study session of February eleventh, twenty twenty five is called Order. Donna, will you do a roll call please?
Councilmember Blush.
Here.
Councilmember Sprenz.
Here.
Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Mary Nando.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Member South.
Here.
And how would remember Gutierrez?
Here.
Thank you, Donna. Tonight, we have one item. We have a guest presenter this evening, John Holbrook, who is a Safety and Security Director, Renton School District, is here to share information for Drug Awareness Project. I'm sorry, I was running over here. And John, can we ask questions during the presentation? We'd rather us wait till it's over.
No, that's fine.
Okay, and at the end of the presentation, do you mind if the public asks you questions as well?
No, that's fine.
Okay. All right. You have the floor.
Thank you so very much. It's an honor to be here to speak. I'm born and raised in Sheldon, so definitely appreciate your time.
Welcome home, sir.
Yeah, so one of the caveats that I say is by no means am I an expert when it comes to drug makeup and chemical compounds and any of that stuff. What I do know is what we're seeing the youth abuse across the nation. When I say youth, really twenty-five and under is kind of my my primary target there. A lot of what we're going to talk about comes from a much larger group, but these are things that we've seen in schools that we've seen here on the West Coast. Things kind of start on the East Coast and travel to the West. My intent is not to offend anybody. My intent is not to scare anybody. There might be something on here that you take or you have a family member who takes. When taken responsibly by adults, a lot of these are not a problem. It's really when the youth get them, don't understand what they're taking, how much to take, that's where it becomes a problem. So I like to throw those caveats out there. One of the first questions that I like to ask is, is how many of you cook? And specifically, does anybody here bake? Any big bakers? Couple? The reason that I asked that is nutmeg is actually one of the main substances that we see kids use to get high. Nutmeg affects the body the same way that LSD does, so it's a hallucinogenic. I've seen some videos on social media. Fortunately, this generation posts everything online. So there's an individual in his early twenties who goes into Walmart, he buys a little nutmeg canister, puts it in a milkshake, drinks it, and he doesn't walk for about three days. As far as I can tell, there was a couple TikTok challenges in the early days of social media. One was the cinnamon challenge, where people would eat a spoonful of cinnamon and try to talk. And then nutmeg is a soccer move where you kind of kick a ball between somebody's legs. Somewhere along the lines, those merged and people started to realize if I take about a tablespoon of nutmeg, I'm having the same trip as if I'm taking LSD. So one of the things I recommend people is I always kind of put a line on my nutmeg just in case my kids start to get crazy on me. But so these are the kind of substances that we'll talk about. There's a lot of information out there about fentanyl and alcohol and vaping. The things that I'm going to talk about, there's really not a lot of information out there about. And that's what really impacted me when I first started to hear about these substances from people who this is their entire life is to put this together. So yeah, by all means, if you have questions, I'd love to answer them as we go. The main group that we'll talk about here is nootropics. Nootropics are marketed more as a dietary supplement. Really, their their big push is to say that they improve cognitive functioning. What we have found is it does in small doses, but it has much worse effects. The number one is kratom. So kratom is really the most popular one that we see, especially in our area. Kratom is marketed as as like a mood enhancer supplement. What we have found is that it has the same effect on the body as heroin. It's essentially a synthetic heroin, break it down. When I go out to stores and I talk to owners or clerks that sell this stuff, the largest population who buys this are heroin users who use this to curb withdrawal effects or who can't get their hands on heroin, so they take kratom. And kratom really became popular in the South with a couple of these other nootropics groups that we'll talk about. But here in Washington State, this has become the most popular one. The thing about kratom is it's not age regulated here in Washington, unfortunately. So I've talked to fourteen and fifteen year old kids who can walk into AMPM Chevrons and buy this. And they take it and they have no idea what they're taking. And then they're ending up really sick, hospitalized or addicted. And that's true for any age range, really. One of the things about Washington State that we'll post was up here is we recently had two high profile deaths in Calhoun County that were attributed to kratom. One of the families was able to sue the manufacturer, and that was one of the first successful lawsuits in the United States against the kratom manufacturer due to an overdose death tied to kratom. Washington Post did a study. They looked at deaths across the United States from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. And they found that kratom was linked to over four thousand overdose deaths across the country, almost forty-two hundred. Exactly. So it is killing people. And it's crazy to me that it's it's just out there. You can walk into pretty much any store. There's other agencies that are doing a lot of good work here in Mason County that can go into a lot more detail about what's local when I can. I will tell you, I've walked into just about any type of store, whether it's small business, a large chain, and some version of kratom, usually about a dozen or so variations are available at a counter. And you don't have to show ID to buy it. You can be any age. There was the Kratom Consumer Protection Act, which is sort of a federal verbiage that is able to be adopted by states that makes the legal age twenty-one. A lot of states have adopted that. Washington State is not one of those. So that's one of the things that we're really trying to hope and get the education out there about how dangerous this stuff is because we really would like to see the legal age up to twenty-one. The picture in the bottom right, just to kind of show how small those are. So that's my hand. That is a bottle that I pulled off of a student in a high school in our area. And that is not uncommon for what we find in schools. And again, when we talk to the kids, they don't understand what it is, and it's hard for for me as an adult and the parents that I've talked to to have that conversation with their kids about how dangerous this product is when the kid just sees, well, I can go into any store, I can buy it. It says dietary supplement on the bottle. So like, how bad is it really to them? Some of the kids I've talked to, like, well, you're just, it's the same as caffeine. You're just trying to scare me. No, this is killing people.
The government has listed as a concern, so why doesn't the government just outlaw this stuff?
Honestly, I cannot tell you. And it's interesting when I look across the states. So there are some states that have banned it altogether. Alabama being the first one. There are some states that have made the purchase age either eighteen or twenty-one. And in some states where they just have not taken any action, there are counties, there are cities that have made it different regulations within their jurisdiction. So Denver's, I think, one of the biggest ones. Where Colorado, it's not regulated, but within Denver, the purchase age is twenty-one. I know up and down California, there's a few jurisdictions that have different different regulations upon it. Some have outlawed it altogether. So it's, it is interesting. I have not seen, so the Kratom Consumer Protection Act came out of some of the federal legislation that failed to get pushed through. So they still came up with the language for a bill for the states to use, the agency to put that together. But I couldn't answer that question. The picture in the bottom right is a store that I went into in Thurston County. Just as an example, again, I don't want it, this is not to like downtrodden anybody, but that's an example of how many different variations they have. All of those are types of kratom in the bottom right. There's pills, there's powder, there's liquids, there's just about any type of way that you want to buy this, you can get it. And again, I asked the individual, I have those conversations, there's no age restriction. Anybody can walk in and buy that. Teneptine is the product that really kind of put nootropics on the map, for lack of a better term. More commonly referred to as Zaza. The Alabama governor testified in Congress about how dangerous T and F team was, referred to it as gas station heroin. And that was kind of the normaque that really stuck with a lot of this group. There was a lot of overdose deaths in Alabama attributed to Zaza over the last decade. So currently, there's about nine states that have completely outlawed T and F team and Zaza. Used to be accessible here. I really, because of the amount of lawsuits against T and F team producers, I've not seen it as regularly available here in Washington State. I used to be able to go up north, Northern King County and Everett and find this in a lot of stores, and I don't see it as often. And still, you can get it online. It's not regulated here in Washington. Same same effects. It's very similar to morphine or any kind of opiate, highly addictive and causes a lot of damage. One of the interesting things, and again, I'm not an expert when it comes to sort of the chemical compounds. Some of the the information that was presented by Alabama and some of the states that have banned it altogether was that what first responders were seeing was people were taking Zaza or kratom with other opiates, whether it be fentanyl, whatever the case may be. And because these are synthetically made, Narcan was not effective in bringing people back. So they said the synthetic compound structure of these products was blocking Narcan from being able to reach the opiate receptors in the body. And that was why they really made the push to ban these. They had a lot of overdose deaths even when trying to use Narcan at the time.
What was made by the, what is their desire at that?
A lot of them are, I've seen mood enhancers, I've seen improves cognitive function. Kind of like a relaxing effect, mood enhancer. There's a variety and they change a lot. As these products get outlawed and banned or sued, they'll change their marketing, they'll change the sticker on the bottle. So kind of an example of how kids see it, and this was actually one of my kids caught it up to me. And again, Nick RTFM, there's nothing against him as a streamer. He's a very popular streamer on YouTube. He streams soccer content, a lot of FIFA, if you played FIFA at all. And during a popular tournament in twenty twenty-four, last year in June, just as an example, you know, he put that one of the soccer players was on Zaza. That soccer player was having a really good game. And during some of his streams, he'll use Zaza. That's kind of a joke, like, oh, I need to take Zaza so I can improve how much I play. And so I've seen kids that follow these streamers, hear them say that in a joking manner, but don't understand that, and then think they need to take Zaza and perform better. Whether it's youth football, whatever the case may be. So that was some of the instances where I started to hear Zaza come up from kids around me, and I was like, all right, I have to do something. And so that was what kind of spurred this this whole conversation. So just as an example of how kids are seeing this, it's not even going into gas stations. It's a popular topic amongst YouTubers, social media. It's all over the place. Phenobat is another, in that same nootropic family. This one's more of a sedative, more of a sedative effect. In states that have outlawed Zaza and kratom or have regulated it, we're now starting to see Phenobit become more and more popular. I used to see this very seldom and usually mixed with something else, but especially in the South, people that I've talked to that go out and look in stores are seeing Phenobit pop up all over the place. So this is kind of that up and coming wave, and it's essentially the same thing. It's a synthetic opiate. Affects the body the same way as heroin. It's very addictive, very dangerous. Alabama right now is the only state that's completely outlawed it. Alabama really took affirmative stance on this entire family. Kava is the next one we'll talk about. So kava is very popular in the South Pacific. Came up as a root. Kava now is being marketed as more of an alcohol replacement. So it has the same effect on the body when taken in certain dosage as drinking alcohol. Some people that I've talked to or heard describe their likes is is the sedative effect, the forward effect of alcohol, alcoholism, motor skills to that level. It has been banned in a couple countries, but in the United States, it's not regulated at all. We'll kind of quickly move on to the next page. Again, this is nothing negative against these. I just want to show how prevalent it is. So this popped up on my Facebook a while back, so there is a kava bar. And these are popping up all over the place. They're really popular on the East Coast. I've seen them pop up really in lots of areas around the Seattle Renton area. And now this is one that popped up in Olympia, and this is just to show that it is part of our culture. It is here with we. And it's marketed as an alcohol replacement. But it does have that same effect. The interesting thing, some of the cases that I've read about are individuals are going drinking kava. They're getting pulled over, they're failing field sobriety tests, but their breathalyzer test or their blood alcohol test is coming back as zero because there's no alcohol in. It's just the way that they're taking it, it has the same effect as getting drunk. It doesn't last as long, so some people think they can have that feeling really quick and then it'll go away, but. And in a lot of those cases that I've read about in different states, it goes to court and then they get thrown out. And then the person says, well, I didn't, I didn't drink any alcohol. It was it was kava. And there's just a lack of education about when taken in certain doses, certain ways, what exactly it does to your body. I'm also seeing kava marketed a lot in states where kratom and Zaza have been outlawed. My turn nine from that news article there that I pulled. It's just one example of dozens and dozens of companies that are mixing kava with other substances. And in fact, the kava bars, that's kind of one of their their go-tos is they'll take a drink and then they'll mix kratom with the kava. You get kind of this concoction. It's kind of marketed as like a healthy supplement. So you see a lot of those mixed, which is bad because one of the things that kava and kratom are is a potentiator for other substances. And so when you take those, it really increases the effects of other substances that you're taking. So for example, I have seen individuals take, whether it's kratom, kava, or some of these other substances that are potentiators, and then just drink a fifth of or a shot of vodka. And that vodka affects their bodies if they just drink an entire fifth because the effects are really amplified because of some of those potentiating substances.
What do you want to actually create some of those? In the overdoses that that appeared, what kind of volume is being consumed? So are they taking mass doses that they buy in stores or is it smaller amounts?
So I've seen a big things, to be honest. I don't know if it's in here. I cannot remember, but I remember reading through this lawsuit paperwork for one here in Washington State, and it was not a significant amount. And it was a healthy adult male who took it before going to bed in the primary lawsuit. And unfortunately, passed away. I've seen some people take a large amount, not have any effects. And I've seen some people take two, three bottles and unfortunately pass away. So.
I guess also because we're created control, you don't really know what the potency point to be at your time.
Correct. Yeah, it's hard to really understand.
So there's kava bar. Is there a pay restriction on this population?
For the most part, from what I've seen, is twenty-one to go into the bars and eighteen to purchase it. But that is, from what I can tell, the research I've done largely put on it by manufacturers. There, from what I can tell, there's not a national age. So some of like in the picture that's on right, the kava shot, I don't believe you would have to have a certain age to purchase that, just from what some of the stuff I've seen in different shops. It really depends on how it's marketed. And I have a sense that's probably to a boy bosses. Akwama, not one that is is extremely popular, but we do see it. It's a plant that grows in Africa, and it's sort of a euphoric high, very relaxing effects on the body. For the most part, people chew on the seeds. So I have, I've seen kids who will sit in the back of the classroom and just chew on the seeds and they're sort of getting that head high and that euphoric high, and people don't even realize what they're doing. It just looks like they're, you know, sunflower seed, whatever the case may be. And again, widely available, you can get it pretty much anywhere that sells supplements. And same kind of effect as as kava. Users describe it as a similar feeling to being drunk or alcohol inebriation, just not as intensive. The interesting thing about Akwama, as I researched some of the studies out there on it, it's actually really dangerous to the liver, according to several studies. So quite a bit of liver damage to heavy consumers. Damiana is a flower, grows in Mexico. It's a hallucinogenic flower, really became popular, the psychedelic water that you see in the top right. As far as I could tell, was popular over social media during COVID. The FDA has sort of regulated it a little bit, so you don't see that psychedelic water too too much. I will tell you, the company psychedelic water still exists, but they're making kratom, they're making kava, making those type of products. The Damiana products don't exist too much, or you have to purchase them online. They're a little bit harder to find. But Damiana is still widely available as a as a leaf. A lot of people smoke it as Akwama. Users that I talk to say it's pretty harsh. It's not their most enjoyable, but in a pinch, it works. Not as strong as a highest THC, but same effects. And Damiana was one, I'll just kind of put it in perspective, one of the ingredients in spice, if you remember when spice was around several years ago. So that type of effect on the body. Overdoses, a lot of convulsions and symptoms similar to rabies, which I thought was interesting, as I started to read some of these effects. So it does some damage. Another one that's widely available, pretty much anywhere that supplements are sold. HHC, so HHC is essentially THC, just bottom line. But HHC is a hemp derived version of THC. So the twenty eighteen farm bill made hemp derived products federally legal, since anything with point three percent or less THC can be sold as a hemp derived product. And so what companies have started to do over the years is turn those into gummies, turn those into loose leaf, turn those into vapes. Washington State regulates this a little bit more, so this is still regulated pretty heavily. Oregon, not so much. You can still go down there and get these. So what I've seen kids do, I definitely attention to how prevalent some cars are in Washington, really in states. I know of kids that will steal a car. They will go down to Oregon, those cars to do smash and grabs in the stores, vape shops, whatever the case may be, and they will grab a lot of products. And down in Oregon, they're looking for the hemp derived products because while this has the exact same effect on the body as THC, it doesn't pop up any kind of drug test unless specifically being screened for. So a lot of our kids that are on parole and on probation seek out these hemp derived products to still be able to have that experience without testing positive on their on their tests. Magic mushrooms. Magic mushrooms have been around for a while. It's a very hallucinogenic effect. There's been a big push recently over the last several years to decriminalize magic mushrooms. There are counties within Washington that have decriminalized it, Oregon decriminalized it, so they're widely available. Companies are starting to make these into gummies, chocolate bars. They're not regulated, going back to your point about the synthetic, not regulated as much. So I've talked to users who have bitten into different parts of a chocolate bar and got wildly different experiences just because the amount of mushrooms that are in each bite. Interestingly, what I've found from some of the people that I've talked to who kind of sell these is that it is legal to buy the spores and it is legal to buy the grow kits. So you can get those online, and then it's only really when you mix those and grow them for illicit purposes, it's when it becomes illegal. But the people that I know that are dealing with stuff, they don't, they don't care. So they can get on Amazon fairly cheap. They can buy the grow kit, they can buy the spores and have everything they need to make these magic mushrooms, and they do target kits. Outside of cybocillan mushrooms, we have amanita mushrooms, which have never been regulated. They're perfectly legal. Has the exact same effect as the cybocillan mushroom, it's just not as strong, but people just take note of it. The problem with amanita mushrooms is they're much more dangerous. So they're much more poisonous, so the overdose factor is a lot higher than with the magic mushrooms. Again, these are sold in gummies, and I actually have on this picture, these are two versions that I took off of students over the last couple of years. These are five gummies in each pack, and you can see ten thousand milligrams. That's per pack. On the back of these packages, they actually have little emoji faces, that say, if you take one, this is how much your face will melt. And then if you take all five, it's just an emoji that's melted. And so it's kind of a game for some kids. They want to try and get that that my face is fully melted factor. I will say, these are much more prevalent than you probably realize. We actually just had Ben took a photo that was kind of cracking me up of a story here in Mason County. I counted at least two dozen different variations of amanita mushrooms being sold in that story. Chocolates, gummies, little pop rock type of candy, you name it, it's being sold out there. It's kind of hard to, I'll actually zoom in because I do want people to see how it's being marketed, being marketed as a legal magic mushroom. So they're they're specifically marketing it in that manner. Yeah, from what I've seen, these are all twenty-one or older. I've not seen anywhere that sold these anywhere younger. But again, it's, we see them all the time.
And that's just manufacturer, not by law.
Okay. Dotura, Dotura is one that's relatively new to me. I hadn't heard about it until about six months ago, when I had a young man talk about trying it at a party. And when I look it up, it's a hallucinogen, kind of like LSD, some of those other crazy ones that people take to trip. The experiences that I've read about and seen on some of the videos where people upload it, it's very dangerous. It's 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 not a very it's not a very common one that people take. And so the the different types of trips that people have are varying, varying levels of euphoria, different levels of of panic and danger. And so some of the people that I've said, or some of the people that I've seen take this, they will never do it again. These are heavy users of psychedelics. And it's just an overall feeling that you're going to die. It's very poisonous. So there's a lot of, the percentage of people who overdose on this is very high. And what I thought was interesting, as I started to look into it in the bottom right hand corner, you can see these pods. Essentially, what it is, is you chew the seeds from the pod to get that high. And you can buy a pod for about twelve dollars off of Pinterest. So relatively cheap to get. Salt nicotine is one that I talk about specifically for, you know, with kids or schools. Salt nicotine has become a very popular type of vape. We know that vapes are prevalently used across schools. Salt nicotine is a very concentrated nicotine vape product, so it's about two to ten times the concentration of a regular vape. And essentially, they take the nicotine salts out of typical nicotine, mix it with some acid, and then that's what is in the vape. So the amount of product that a, especially a child needs to inhale is much less than your typical vape to get a much stronger effect. So these are being sold, and especially schools and buildings that have vape detectors. I see a large percentage of salt nicotine being made into their wedding schools because the the amount that you blow out is not enough particulate to set off the sensor in those vape detectors. It used to be, the pictures that I have up there are sort of the original version of these salt nicotines with the very large tips. Now, as I go around, salt nicotine vapes are very prevalent, and they just look like any other vape. They're very thin, very easy to use. Vape types, I won't talk too much about this. This is really for for my schools. One thing that I will say is, you know, it's, it's really interesting to me as I look around, the amount of vapes that I confiscate on a daily basis, just working in schools. It's ever changing. So if you're, if you're a parent or a guardian, I just really encourage you to search your children's dreams, especially if you think they might be using vapes, because I have seen vapes that don't look anything like them. They look like pens, they look like highlighters. I've seen ones that are video games. These companies are making these to really get around detection. So. Whippets, Whippets is a nitrous oxide, popular party drug, especially, you know, prior to two thousand. It's essentially, it's a compressed air that you ingest into the into the mouth, and it gives you a head high. It's usually pretty quick. Over the last three to four years, companies have started to manufacture these in flavors to really promote the use of them by by the youth. That same store, actually, that I saw a picture, there was nine different versions, the store here in Mason County, nine different flavors of Whippets being sold. And it just goes to show that these are very prevalent. So there is actually a trend, two trends that I've seen. So Cosmic Gas. You see different variations of that name, is a company out of Atlanta that's really marketed this sort of new generation of Whippets to kids. And so it's very popular, and that has unfortunately spawned some social media trends. So these are two screenshots that I took from videos that I saw on some kids' phone. So the two trends, one is kids try to take a Whippet while they're driving. So a lot of stolen cars that we find, that people are taking Whippets while they drive them and trying to make these videos where they essentially survive taking the Whippet and not crashing. So many videos as I've seen, I've never seen anybody not crash, so I don't really know the success rate. And then the video on the right is an individual who takes that Whippet while in class and then tries to kind of walk around the perimeter of the classroom without falling down or without the teacher noticing. So those are two of the trends that we're kind of seeing on social media right now, tied to the use of it. But it has become a very popular party drug again. And it's it's all over the place. Two that I talk about, again, just really for for education. So Xylazine is a is a horse tranquilizer. It's starting to be made in a synthetic version, kind of overseas. People mix this with fentanyl and create the drug trank, if you've heard of that. It has been found here in Washington. We saw a lot on the East Coast, so it's kind of that next generation of fentanyl use. And I really, this slide and the one after it, I just really like to point that out that no matter how much we do, there's always several generations past, like where it feels like we're currently just starting to get our knowledge up to. So.
Is that legal?
No, this is not. So the, it is legal for veterinary use. It is not legal to be ingested by humans. But we see a lot of robberies like on veterinary hospitals or ERs to steal this. And then the, from what I can tell, the synthetic version that's coming from overseas is so cheap that a lot of that doesn't even have to happen anymore. But they mix it with fentanyl. And it has very damaging effects to the body. There's a lot of videos, especially like out of Philadelphia, that were trending, where people are just kind of hunched over like zombies, and that's what it is. It's much more dangerous than fentanyl. And then there's another one that has just started to pop up as far as my research goes, called Nitazeme. Nitazeme was developed in the sixties by a pharmaceutical company. Their goal was to be a replacement for morphine as kind of the war rampant was going on. No pharmaceutical company on earth would risk their reputation because it was so strong. So it kind of got shelved. And then over the the last couple decades, individuals have found, for lack of a better term, the recipe in online medical journals and have created a synthetic version of this in labs. And it's about twenty times stronger than fentanyl. Some versions of this have been shown to be forty times stronger than fentanyl. We did have an overdose death in Colorado last year, so it is in the United States. We hadn't seen it up until then. It's been very popular in Europe, and it's popular in Canada and a few places. But we have started suits in the United States. So I like to show these just to, just for the education piece and just know what all is out there. Because it seems like. Um, because it seems like fentanyl is now. Um, so especially for parents, uh, just some stuff to kind of keep an eye out, this is against that education piece. Um, these are screenshots that I've taken off the kids in schools that just kind of show how this stuff is kind of sold. Uh, there's different apps, um, the biggest one is Telegram that I've seen be used, uh, there's also WhatsApp if you're familiar with that. As far as I can tell, uh, users will create a Instagram profile, they'll put a little link in their Instagram profile with really no other information. That will take you to their Telegram channel that you have to subscribe to, which has the menu that you can see up here. Um, so you can see they're, they're selling mushrooms, the vapes, um, you name it, pretty much anything has been available. Almost every product that we've talked about in this presentation, I have found available uh on these Telegram dealer apps, um. And if you notice the, a series of emojis next to the different strains. So what happens, uh, is people put in their order, the individual brings up whether it's to a local park. Or whether it's to a school, whatever the case may be, gives out what people ordered, whatever they have left, they then get on Snapchat with their location. And they just put the emojis that correspond to what's on their menu, so then people can go back to their Telegram channel. Look at the emojis that they posted that they have available right now and then pay for it through Zelle or any of these other apps for paying money, so. There's never any mention about drugs or anything illicit being sold, there's never an exchange of money, so it's very hard to really get an understanding of what's going on. Telegram in particular, the reason that these photos look a little odd. Um, there's a setting on there where if you take a screenshot, it doesn't actually show any text. And so I've had a lot of teachers or other, like some law enforcement that tried to take a screenshot of a kid, um, who has the, the information on their phone. And then when they actually sent it themselves, they realized, oh, no text actually showed up, just the background, and that's by design. So that's why Telegram is really a popular one for this, so, again, just something to, to keep them in mind. Um, we're also starting to see a lot of drinks, uh, so in. In the right hand side is one that's really concerning to me, um, that is a thousand milligrams of THC in a bottle. Um, I've had three students go to the hospital, uh, fortunately not in school, but, um, unfortunately, they still ended up going to the hospital, they're okay. But they were handed, um, a cup with this drink at a party, didn't realize what they were tra- drinking. And then taking about four hundred milligrams of THC each, um, so it's very, very strong and pretty inexpensive. Um, and that, so that's a very common one. Uh, it's, this one is mostly like your, your vape shops. But kids still get their hands on it very easily. And then the bres are, uh, it's kind of like a sulfur water, um, but they're microdosed with mushrooms, um, this is just one example, there are dozens and dozens of products. Um, some that are just those, those magic mushrooms that are infused with the drink, some that are THC and magic mushrooms both infused together in the drink. Um, those are becoming very common as well. And then, um, just some other items of notes, um, again, just things to be aware of, especially for, for parents. Um, I'll kind of start in the bottom left-hand corner, there's a, a company called Spraygrounds that makes these backpacks. And the one thing that I want to say is, this is a very popular fashion clothing company, um, and it is, is very big in the youth culture, so. It, it is not necessarily a hit against Spraygrounds the company. However, one of the things that they are very well known for is having a hidden stash pocket on the back of the backpack. So under the bottom left-hand flap, um, on the backside of the bag. Uh, you pull that up and there's a stash pocket in there, and that's where, um, a lot of guys found a lot of stuff in that stash pocket. And every time the kid says, how did you know about that pocket, um, as if I don't also have the internet, but. Um, the card in the bottom right quadrant actually says, congratulations, you found the hidden stash pocket, it's kind of part of the fun about getting these bags, it's finally been. Um, Spraygrounds has backpacks as, you know, cheap as a hundred dollars and then some that go all the way up to several thousand dollars, so again. It's a very popular fashion choice, but I wanted to say like anybody who has one is up to no good. Um, but if you suspect somebody with one is, is up to no good or hiding something, just know, there is that pocket that would be worth kind of looking into. Um, I like to talk about cookies, uh, cookies is another very popular brand of clothing. Um, and again, when I talk to schools, I talk just about the culture with Linnor School. Um, cookies is a, it's a very popular marijuana brand, um, it was started by a rapper in Southern California. Got music studios, they've got spin trees, they've got their own products, they've got, uh, their own paraphernalia. Um, and clothing is just one aspect of that, um, and they're actually really extensive. You'd be surprised how many parents I've talked to that just spent a hundred dollars on a sweatshirt for their kid. And like, do you even know what cookies is? And they say, no, it's just like cookies, right? No. There's a marijuana clothing company, and so, um, you can walk around pretty much any school in the United States of America right now and you'll find. Uh, dozens of these articles of clothing, they're just very popular. Uh, but again, I like to just make sure that parents understand that that's part of a marijuana business, and just talk about what we're doing. Um, in the middle there, that Barbasol I thought was interesting, so, um, again, that's another, uh, Etsy find. Um, so that is a shaving cream cannon, I think the person who created that wrote on Jurassic Park like I did. If you're familiar with that movie, it looks just like how the dino hangs, um, but it holds about seven, uh, THC vape cartridges. Uh, within that, and so, um, very hard to find if you don't know how to unscrew the bottom of it and actually look into that, so, just different ways for people to hide certain things. Uh, the bottom right is a company called Ratio, um, so they make a THC and CBD cartridge that looks like an asthma inhaler. Um, I have seen kids take, uh, the asthma prescription stickers off of their friends who actually have asthma and put it over the logo on the. So that looks even more legitimate like an asthma inhaler, um, and it's really a THC, uh, vape cartridge. And then the top right is just one example, there are dozens of companies that make hoodies that are made for vaping. Um, a lot of times you take those THC cartridges, you can put in one drawstring, you take a hole from the other. A lot of these are designed to circumnavigate security, whether it's out like sporting events, concerts. Uh, but again, pretty much anybody that is trying to get their, their vapes in areas where they're not supposed to have them, uses these things, so they're very prevalent online. So it's just an education piece, especially for parents and guardians, just to understand what's out there, what's available to their kids, um, stuff for you to look for. Uh, and that is, that is all that I have, I really appreciate it, um, and again, any, any questions that I could answer.
Council, how many questions? You said you weren't gonna scare us, but this is the third time I've seen you do this and my blood pressure is probably one ninety over a hundred and twenty right now. I mean, this is really scary. Have you seen any counties in our state that have outlawed this, cities or counties in Washington? I've forwarded this all, your presentation to our, our state senator and our two legislators already, maybe a few months ago, and they said that they would look into it, but I mean, I would be all for. Um, banning it in the city. I don't know if it would help because you can go to Olympia and buy it, I'm, I'm sure the county would probably be interested in looking into, looking at it as well, but especially kratom, I mean. My goodness, I mean, all of it, all of it scares the shit out of me, well, to tell you the truth, but. No, not nutmeg, I actually eat nutmeg a lot, my, my, my.
You know, at least not like kratom's killing people, nutmeg, it just is gonna cause you to have a really rough couple of days. I think, yeah, kratom is definitely one that I strongly encourage. Kratom, kava, and almonita mushrooms, really, that's three that I see heavily used in western Washington.
Come a long way from explodes and, and, uh, you know, even just, uh. Whip, whipped cream bottles, you know, like, um, it's just the, the. The evolution of how, or, you know, hiding stuff in your sock, I mean, it's just come a long way and, uh, thank you for keeping us up to date.
We're gonna allow some of the public to ask questions, um, I think Ben Johnson wants to ask the question. I'm in the podium band, so. Closer to a mic at least.
People online can hear the question follow along.
Um, Ben Johnson, Mason County Public Health, I'm the Substitution Convention Coalition Coordinator for Mason County, uh, been doing that for ten years. And prior to that, I, I did a lot of tobacco work in our county and policy work. Um, prevention is one of those things that, um, a lot, lots of only see, you know, we're, we're working upstream. To stop the problem, or at least slow it down, so our children, um, aren't infected down here. Um, I've been working with John for the last year or so and Mayor and Lindsay, um. For the last year on this project and trying to get our community informed. I just recently went out and did a survey of seven stores, I didn't hit every store, um, that's another project, but, um. Four out of the seven, so just, uh, so kratom, whipits is another one, um. And I'll give my own opinion on it, I'm, I don't know why stores sell whipits at all. Um, they're the little gas containers and, uh, he's, a lot of times you'll see them at the park, the empty cartridges at the parks. You'll see them on the side of the street, if you're walking down the street, and it's our children that are snorting this stuff and getting high. It's a quick high, ten minutes or so, then they need to do it again, um. Being sold at our convenience stores, mostly convenience stores, and, and, but. Initially, I'd learned this, uh, we were calling it a gas station heroin, but, um, that's kind of what it is, kratom is the other one, uh. Some stores don't have it, but the stores that do have it, have a lot of it, when you walk in there to, to a convenience store. All kinds of stuff added at the front, um, counter. Have it, you don't even know, you know, a lot of it is the, the energy drinks, that sort of thing, but some of it is kratom. And those kratom bottles that come in the liquid, they're actually marked for doses. You're supposed to only take like a dose, while a lot of people take the whole thing, and so, that's a big issue. Don't have to be, uh, eighteen or twenty-one to go in the convenience store and do that stuff. Um, I, the clerks don't really know too much about what they're selling, they're just selling it, that's, you know. It's, it's what they do, the owners are the ones that, and they know a little bit more, although I always spoke to one owner. So I'm willing to go out and speak to more, find out what else is out there, there's a lot of this stuff that, um, to be honest. I don't, you know, I'd have to really investigate what's in the store. But, um, our coalition has been working hard for the last few years, um, I'm getting, you know, getting. This information out to our community, so our leadership can make a decision on, um. And our next step is going to be in the county commissioners in March.
Any question? I have a question for you, uh, have you, you don't have to name them, contacted any retailers and have they voluntarily pulled any of these products up?
No, no, I literally just went in and took some pictures and some of the pictures that were right there might have been from our own stores. So, um, and just kind of talk, you know, I say I'm from the, I'm the health department, showing my car, giving my car. We're actually doing a project on the twenty-seventh, it's a, a community mapping project, um, and involves. Different sectors of our community, some of you have already been asked to be on that, and, um. We are going to continue to work on this issue, um, and that might be something that comes out of that. How far forward do we go with this in trying to possibly, um, deal with policies that? Be honest. You know, in my opinion, I, I think, you know, if it's unregulated, then I think we need to continue to really investigate. Why we're struggling.
Question for Ben?
Uh, question about, um, like mega doses of caffeine and energy drinks?
Yeah.
Is that something that's also causing a problem? I know a lot of folks, including myself, where that third cup of coffee is not enough and I need a Red Bull.
Yeah.
And then I get people who are like, they're just, they're just way past three coffees a day and they're just doing Red Bulls all day.
Yeah, yeah, it's an issue for, yeah, a lot of people are difficult to, it's caffeine, right, so.
And then, you know, the long effect, people are having alopecia and. And it's just not working, and so they find other stimulants or whatever, so I'm just saying like, are there lethal dos- dosages or? Dosages where it's beyond recommended?
Oh, yeah, there are, I, I don't know what those are, but, yeah.
Just wondering about how, if we start doing, you know, restrictions or huge taxations. Um, how far do we have to go and what can target, will we over-target? Um, so I'm just, and it's always a new thing like bad salts and. So those are the concerns, but number one, education, that we understand where it's coming from and how to probably prevent excess, that's the way, but.
Um, by the way, one of the things I've heard from more than one, one person in the last week or so, is that. There's a lot of heroin users that you will use kratom, if they can't get heroin, you'll use kratom on a, to get them through that period. Um, so there's people out there that are saying, well, this is kind of keeping me going day to, day to day, um. My opinion on that would be, you know, we, I, we probably need to look at what's enabling. You know, is this just another drug that we're saying, is it okay to continue to do this drug to do this other drug? So, you know, it'd just be a question we need to.
But we also understand that there's harm reduction that we could do as well. Although if it's supervised, it, it might be okay, but I'm just saying that as an abuse, abusive substance, then this is where it gets scary.
Right, and the harm reduction part, that's exactly, I talked to Christine Molluschen. Um, who does our syringe exchange, and that's, she brought that up to me too, so I understand that. But, you know, I think, you know, for prevention messaging and getting the information out to our youth. Our younger people, you know. Need to think about, if we're gonna just continue to sell it, um, we're, we know other. County, it sounds like, or city in the state senate, by the way, the ci- the state, uh, the board of health, wait, DOH. Um, is just starting to look into this also, so they just met last week. Mason County, we're kind of like one of the first on this, um, we were one of the first with, um, making tobacco. Uh, that we go in our bars and restaurants before that went into, um, state law, so. We've been doing some good work in Mason County, our parks are, um. You know, our, our city parks, our county parks, went smoke free, uh, a long time before some of the, the state, you know, the big cities did, so.
Back about twenty years ago, I was on the mayor's get rich and trust force in the city of San Jose. And what we did in addition to monitoring all these new drugs was also include a lot of school, after-school activities. Maybe even open up a boys and girls club or something more that kids can have a, a positive. Outlet to do stuff instead of just go on the internet and find stuff to do. So I mean, if we do something, I'd like to have a comprehensive. Um, approach to how we handle, um, drug addiction and the disconnection that, um, youth have from our society, so.
Prevention comes in a lot of different matters, you know, that sort of thing, education, policy. It comes in a lot of different ways, so yes, I think it'd be, it's part of the big wheel, um, and we need a lot of. A lot of things to keep our kids busy.
You should have more positive ways to discourage, um, certain activities, but I'm just. Throwing it out there, if we do decide as a possible to move forward on stuff, we should also have a balance and have a positive. Way to, um, decrease the effects of what's going on with it.
And Councilman, you sat in on that, um, meeting last week and you tell a little bit about where the, the state is with that?
Um, they heard, there was some people, I'm sure they're still.
I've seen, I log into it.
The end result was, uh, they, they were considering scheduling it as a schedule one. And they heard the people who were users and people who were against it, they heard a lot of information. And the end result was that they did not have enough information to classify it as schedule one in Washington state, um, it was basically all or nothing. And everything, so it had to be either schedule one or the other. So they basically came to the conclusion not to schedule it as schedule one, but they did decide to vote to move it to the question, so they opted for one. Here, some type of regulations.
Any other questions for these gentlemen? In the audience? Chief, have you heard, or either chief over there, have you heard, or seen it on the streets of, out there when you're out? You know, has there been overdoses here in Mason County on some of this stuff? Do we know?
I do know that I ended this, uh, as for overdose is not particularly, but seeing the government or using alternative. Methods to, to, you know, high, to, yeah, and, and it. All those things there, stuff like honors play a part, being home alone plays a part, uh, peers play a part. Um, all of that is part of it, so, having the, and, 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 or, you know. House members that are discussing, you know, having. Federal alternative institute things, it's certainly positive that she's not had that stuff.
Any other questions?
I absolutely appreciate you coming here and doing this presentation for us and I imagine you're doing it all over the place. That for other areas too, I would definitely be interested in, in seeing some legislation from other. States or locals, local branches of government that have actually allotted and just see how they've done it, and I don't know how we would enforce something like that, I guess. Have to talk to our police department, but, or I don't know if it would be a health department, um, issue, um. If it would be banned by the health department, but it definitely needs to be addressed because, I mean, some of this stuff is, it's ridiculous. I mean, it shouldn't be in convenience stores, I mean, I would, I'd sign, sign it tomorrow, if you can get something tomorrow to dial out, but if you can drive to Olympia, you can get it. So.
Be able to age restrict it just a year, or would we be able to limit it just the sale of, of like? Be able to age restrict it just a year, or would we be able to limit it just the sale of of like twenty one plus?
I'd be interested to see that, if, I mean, if if there's legislation out there, I would look at, see if that's been done other places, yeah, just. Yeah.
Yeah.
I would, I would hope it'd be local, county and city um joint effort, but um. Commissioners that would have to agree to that.
And I would say that would really help, and speaking from the school district perspective, um both my own Sheldon and I I. Um presented to several school districts, it is hard for us to develop policy against having some of this in schools because it's not regulated. Kind of to your point, it kind of opens up a, we have people like, well, caffeine count. Um that's, that's a legitimate question that's come up, and so it's really hard to ban some of this in schools or tell kids you can't have this in class. And there really is no regulation around it at any level in the state, so. Just for what it's worth, my two cents from a school district perspective, that would really help us. Be able to control it, get that education piece. We're not out to discipline kids for having it. It's really just that education piece and and confiscating it and having that conversation with students if they do have it.
I mean, four thousand deaths for something you can buy in a convenience store is is ridiculous.
Two years.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I'll just remember that the gateway drug is sugar, so if you ever see a kid on sugar. Or ask for it, or like, just a taste move, like, I mean, it's like, couldn't be from way up there, you know, so. Just saying that almost everything could be improperly used, especially a lot of, if you're an herbalist that you grow stuff at home, like what's the. You know, you have the point of echinacea, you know, like, um so just just saying that, um this is way more complex, but seeing these abuse. Really easy, simple abuse cases makes it um. Understandable why we need some sort of.
Don, anyone online?
No.
All right. The council has a new entry discussion. This session is adjourned at six fifty-three P M. Thank you, everybody, for coming.